Right, I'll call the order, the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 16th. Order, please rise as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in its justice.
Thank you, you may be seated. And next, we'll recognize the Assistant Township Manager to give the meeting procedures and to call the roll.
Thank you Chair, and thank you to the members of the Board, staff and public for joining us this evening for the September 16th Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors regular meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. It's a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you were in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the Chair calls on you. If you were attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the Board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the Chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, Board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Chair, you have a call.
All right, thank you. Oh, I just remembered, the Board of Supervisors did have an executive session on September 8th regarding various matters of personnel. There are no further announcements or proclamations, so we will start with a public comment. This is a time where you can approach the Board and address anything that you want to address that's not on the agenda. So we kindly ask you to give five minutes when you're coming up to the podium to state your name and municipality of residence. We will start in the room. There are no takers in the room, no public online. So that will move us to the approval of the minutes from the September 2nd meeting. If nobody has any corrections, I'll take a motion.
Mrs. Patty, so moved.
Zomari, second.
Great, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, reports and presentations, diversity, equity, inclusionary activities, acknowledgements. September is suicide prevention month. Yesterday Hispanic Heritage Month began. International Equal Pay Day is September 18th and Rosahana is September 22nd through September 24th. This evening, next we'll move to our authorities boards and commission reports. The Center Region Parks and Recreation Report has been postponed. We will put that back on the agenda when Mr. Corey Yureyse Grifit can join us. So next up will be the Schlo Library Report presented by Patricia Best.
Good evening, I'm very pleased to be here this evening to share our report with you. And we'll get right to it with some important numbers. The library usage specific to Ferguson Township from January through August of 2025 has become a happy record, I am saying. In that Ferguson Township residents have checked out the highest number of material things from all of COG in terms of Schlo Library, and that amounts to 93,926 physical items that were checked out by Ferguson Township residents. This represents 29.85% of all of COG's usage of the library as well. One other set of numbers that's of interest because it speaks to the convenience for township residents in our usage of the remote book drops. And so 19,716 of these items were returned to the book drops at Giant and Northern Plaza, and 3,000 book drops were returned to Pine Grove Mills as well. So that adds up to just about 25% of materials that were used. So there is significant usage of those book drops as well. I'm going to give you five brief highlights from that period since our last report to you earlier in the spring. First one has to do with some updated technology, and again, something that will serve our patrons well as they come in to use the library. This is the public computing and printing service that we have had. It had reached the end of its life, and we have a new system. The terminology is CASSI, so that's what you will be seeing on the website. And when you come to the library, the resources, we have brand new Chrome boxes and expanded printing options. The printing options now allow patrons to do a prepaid account and then self-serve printing right on site. So it can be one thing to do the work that they want to do and to use the library in that way to support their learning as well. And additionally, which again is a convenience for our client, they'll be able to use their mobile devices to do the printing as well. So that's something we're happy to report. The second highlight is that Schlo and in our valued partnership with Center Region Parks and Rec and their program for the summer rec on the go. On May 17th, some of you perhaps attended this. The children's department hosted a story block celebration. And this was done at the Autumn Wood Park to showcase the new story that was installed. If you can picture this, families had a lot of fun making chipmunk masks. And they wore those while strolling through the park. And the connection is that these were for the featured story, which was Chippy Chipmunk Parties in the Garden by Kathy Miller. And Beth Lee was also on hand for additional outdoor fun with Center Region Parks and Recreation as well. So that partnership is one that's valued and bears a lot of fruit and activities, family activities especially for the community during the summertime as well. The other thing I would update you on that is Schlo's participation in the new Whitehall Park. And there's a new story block in the Whitehall Park. So hopefully people are enjoying this gorgeous autumn weather we've been having recently to view that story block titled "One World, Many Colors" by Ben Lerwell. Moving right along, the third highlight is another one about a new digital subscription. And this is called Overdrive Magazines, and you access it through Libby, through that portal in the library as well. This one makes thousands, literally thousands of magazines available to library patrons to choose from, including titles that you will recognize such as Wired, The New Yorker, US Weekly, Rolling Stone, and National Geographic Kids. All of these are available for patrons who want to use them with no lines and no waiting. Those have become hallmarks of services, I think, that we've become used to as well. The fourth highlight, this is an onsite improvement. This is a reader's garden, and thanks to the generosity of a donor, we're doing a major upgrade to the reader's garden on the outside of the library as well. This is going to include a patio, a winding path, new fencing, lots of new plantings, also a ramp to make sure that that area is accessible for all of our patrons as well. This is going to enable not just a pleasant place to sit outside of the library building, but also an area for activities. And this is only the first step to enable the rolling out of other kinds of activities that thou can make use of in outdoor space that we haven't been able to do in quite the way that we will be able to do with this upgraded facility as well. And the fifth highlight that I wanted to bring to your attention was a traditional report we give you in August or September about the summer reading program. We're happy to report back to some numbers that 1,602 summer readers took part in various parts of the ages three through 12 part of the program. And this is up from 1,575 in 2024. There were 106 babies and toddlers who achieved their reading goals alongside their dedicated grown-up participants as well. And rounding that out, rounding that out, the 2025 Adult and Teen Summer Reading Program had a record number this summer as well. There were 349 teens and 531 adults who participated in that summer reading program as well. In closing, I wanted to mention one other highlight and then also just a very quick personal anecdote. In closing, Schlo once again is doing the Schlo to Schools Initiative. And this is one, if you will recall, where we make it possible for students, teachers and staff to access books from the library and have them delivered to the school buildings. An important offshoot of this is that this also makes it possible for every child in the school district who wants one to have a library card, which is a very important route to accessibility to our library. The reason I want to share this really quick anecdote with you is because of that program and what it triggered when I was looking at our notes for the report from your packet to share with you this evening. I went to a conference in New York State this summer, and one of the speakers was 88-year-old Morgan Freeman, the actor. And in the Q and A, the lecture was wonderful. In the Q and A afterward, afterwards, one of the audience members asked him, you know, Mr. Freeman, what are some important things from your childhood, growing up in a poor town in northern rural Mississippi? And he thought for a second, and the first thing he said was, "When I was eight years old, someone gave me a library card." And then he went on to elaborate about that and the difference that made to him and his world. And then he chuckled a little bit and he concluded by saying, "And of course, that led me to acting, which is all about telling good stories." Well, you can imagine, you know, my heart was going like this. I thought, oh, that is wonderful, I have to share with people who care about what we do at the library. So that is a little bit of good news and a feel-good kind of story as well. And impromptu thank you, I feel so grateful to be part of a community and a township in particular that value, that support and make use of a public library. And so the impromptu part is to thank you for the role that you play in making that happen for all the rest of us. And that concludes our report.
Any questions for the library?
Mr. Heller?
Just a comment to say thank you. I always appreciate this presentation. I love hearing the numbers. I also appreciate how you bring Ferguson Township right into it. You've got specifics for us, we can hear how our residents are, you know, enjoying the library. That's wonderful to hear. And if I heard correctly, in the budget hearing earlier today at COG, the opening day of summer reading, did I hear correctly that 1,200 children came through the library physically that day? Oh my God, I couldn't imagine. So my head's off the staff. It just, the work that goes in to making everything accessible for our community is wonderful. So thank you.
And the ongoing enthusiasm, energy, dedication to making that happen and the joy.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, I'm super excited about the magazines. That one really has me excited.
The New Yorker?
Yes.
Mentioning about 1,200 kids going through the library, if I'm correct, that also corresponded with the free summer bus pass as well. So they, every student in the region had an opportunity to take the bus to the library on their own too.
Good point, yes.
Yep.
Love that.
With nothing else for the library, we have the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Report presented by Mr. Kevin Abbey.
Thank you, I'm delighted to be here and always good to follow in the footsteps of the library. And Lisa and Patricia are community heroes to me, I just have to say that. My first order of business is to introduce you, re-introduce you to Elise Johnson, who last year was our AmeriCorps member working out of the township. And when AmeriCorps disconnected, is probably the best way to use it, this spring, the Watershed Commission decided that her work with us was so important that we had to keep her on. And she now serves as a Watershed Coordinator on a contractual basis for the Watershed Commission. So she's now, does a different set of work tasks, but stays with us and is working with us as we go forward into the future. And then I also wanted to introduce Deb, you prefer Deb or Deborah?
Deb.
Deb Escalet. In her second day as our new AmeriCorps member, yesterday was orientation, and today is her first day, correct? And she'll be with us from September through June. So if you don't mind, Elise and Deb. Thanks. What's really beneficial for the Watershed Commission is that we have now helpers to carry out the good ideas that in the past, as an all-volunteer organization, it was tough to pull together and get the things done. So you'll see Elise and Deb around in our shared future meetings and active in the community. So we're laying out, we're planning for Deb. That changes as projects come forward, but we're so glad to have you.
Very passionate.
Anything you'd like to say, Elise?
I don't think so. Ferguson hosted us last year, so during my AmeriCorps term, I was able to have a desk up in the Public Works Building. So it's really fantastic, we're in Ferguson Township, so I'll definitely see you over there again and around the community, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Just a couple other things. Secondly, I guess I want to share the Watershed Commission's active collaborations that are underway throughout the community. We work with a whole series of partner agencies. In addition, for those of you that may not know, the Watershed Commission is made up of municipalities from within the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. So it, the way that it's set up is that each of the members appoint an elected official from the unit. And for us, that's Lisa, okay? And Lisa's been very active with the Watershed Commission. It's wonderful to have her. And then I'm your appointed rep as an alternate. So in case the elected official can't make the meeting, then the citizen rep takes over. In addition to the work that we do with members, okay, and it's nice that there is such a thing, outside of the Center Region, but throughout Watershed, just a short list of collaborators. We work closely with Clearwater Conservancy. They function as our fiscal and fiduciary agent for things like our audit and to pay our bills. And so we're, we work very closely with the staff and with Elizabeth Chrisfield, the Executive Director. And that's been a wonderful relationship. We work with Center Region Planning, Center County Planning, the Center County Conservation District. We're very active with TUDEC, Memorial Park, and trying to get more activities integrated into TUDEC. What a wonderful resource that is. We also actively work with conservancy-minded citizens in a committee that we have called ALIS. And if you ever want to know or have access to public information, resources about the Spring Creek Watershed, they have their own website, the Spring Creek ALIS, which is, I think, up to now 60 articles, videos, and different educational resources about the watershed. And that's been going on for several decades. And I always want to make sure that we don't forget our folks with ALIS. Another highlight I would add to amongst our, how we collaborate is through our committee structure. We have, I think, at last count, it was six. In addition to ALIS, we have a governance committee that is made up of all of the member municipalities' engineers. So that they can interface with watershed above matters involving stormwater, MS4, how we can collaborate with regard to projects and share information. We have a authorities committee, which tries to bring in to Watershed Commission all of the municipal authorities from Spring Better Walker down in the lower section of the watershed, City College Rural Water Authority, University Area Joint Authority, and a whole host of PoliChoir Water Authority that work with us to make sure what things they're working on and what challenges they face are members of the commission and representatives, as well as our member municipalities are aware of. So that's a really big thing for us. We have a conservation and stewardship committee that works then with organizations throughout the community like the Center County Conservation District, Trout Unlimited, Sierra Club. Those folks that often are a mix of private nonprofits, as well as local, state, and federal agencies to make sure that we're maintaining communication with them. Then we have an executive committee made up to try and run things and help Elise and Deb find the right spot to focus on. And one last thing I'd mention with regard to collaboration. We've done the last two years in March, a state of the watershed, where we bring together all of the members representative of all these groups to kind of sit down and look at where we at, what's the quality of the water in Spring Creek? What are its physical characteristics? Is the temperature hanging in there? How is the trout population? All of the things that, for a lot of people, Spring Creek is known around the world as a angler, almost, it's a destination. People from all across the country and the world come to Spring Creek in order to fish. And then from that, this March, a group of private sector fishing boat commission, Susquehanna River Basin Commission, DEP, two or three private sector companies came together to self-organize a stormwater work group. Because as they told us, the biggest threat to Spring Creek that we need to be focused on is stormwater. Because if we aren't careful with stormwater and how we address it, it has huge impacts on water quality and particularly the thermal characteristics because stormwater is so much warmer handling than Spring Creek. So that's one that we've been really happy to engage with. And folks previously that worked at Ferguson, like Aaron Jolan and Adam Wallace, are part of this self-organized group to help us. And then the last thing I would probably mention in your packets this evening is we've included our 2026 budget for your information and reference. It raises our budget a slight amount overall for the coming year, but the Watershed Commission is very modest in terms of how it spends money. The thing that's, I mean, last year our budget was $34,000, this year it's $40,000, okay? As a total amount. What's noteworthy is that with the increased activity and in order to have good folks working out on our behalf, we're requesting an increase in the per capita contribution from municipalities to the Watershed Commission. When I got involved back in 2021 and 2022, it had been 10 cents per capita for a number of years. A couple of years ago, it was raised to 15 cents. 10 cents generates $12,000 within the region based on the 2020 census. So this year, in order to keep Elise and Deb and others energized and active, we're requesting a 25 cent per capita. And that will generate a total of $30,000, a $40,000 budget. And we have sent this out to member municipalities in preparation for annual budget season. And any questions? I don't want to go on too long, we're going to be out of the talk.
Any questions for Cat? Kevin?
I was just doing the calculation, 25 cents per head, you said?
Yes.
Thank you. Got it. No, I appreciate the presentation again, and it's interesting because these are the fishing waters that attract a lot of people, sport fishermen. I was surprised, it was sometime, I think, in the late spring when I went over to Spring Creek just to walk around for a bit, and there were fishermen all over the place. I was like, okay, cool, everyone's busy. And then an official came through with like USA Fishing or some other gear saying, oh no, it's competition. And I was like, oh, okay, this is some serious stuff here. I guess I'll smoke my cigar somewhere else. So I moved. But it really, that was not open for me to see.
Are you sure that number recently for the contribution to the local economy?
I did, it's kind of hard to calculate, but it is in the quantity of millions of dollars annually. I saw recently $22 million a year, but I also think on the low estimate, like low round estimate of dollars, but it is significant contribution to the local economy. It is one of the top industries on the entire census, so.
Truly, it's a gem, it needs to be protected, and I appreciate everything that you do. So Elise, welcome back, Deb, welcome.
I guess I would just say thank you for, again, another report that is a feel-good report and I love hearing. So thank you for that. And about your ALIS articles, I was thinking, why does the library sitting here, do they go to the library at all? Do you share for everybody?
That's an interesting outreach idea, I think we should have a very. But I did, regarding ALIS, I did want to mention Ferguson Township's AmeriCorps member Emma Cox, last term. She helped the ALIS program develop a climate article that's going to be posted in the next month or so. So it was fantastic to have Ferguson Township at the table. It's great, thank you.
We'll have to collaborate on that. Yes, thanks. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, COG and Regional Committee Reports. The first one's the Finance Report, the Finance Committee and.
He's twitching, his eye's twitching.
Somebody has probably spent more time in Finance Committee meetings than the rest of us have spent in any meeting this month.
I believe Todd Grady was also there with me, and yes, there were, there were two of us in everything.
Yes.
Sure, the report is, so usually every month we generate a report for the standing committees, the regional committees. And in this case, where we are right now is there has not been a report developed. I'll do one. I'll do one probably for Thursday as we dive into the meat and potatoes. So the last three budget hearings or finance committee working sessions, we're focusing around having the different agency directors come in and talk about their budgets, their capital, their operating, et cetera. So we've gone through all the different agencies within COG so far. Now, on Thursday, we'll be turning our attention to essentially the a la carte menu, that thing that we reviewed, the SIGC, that had the list of all the different things that are warranted or wanted, we'll say. We'll be going through that list line by line to see what goes in, what gets modified, et cetera. But we've now laid the groundwork to have that conversation on Friday. The, the good news is, and I'll call it good news, is that if we were to accept everything that is in the SIGC, it totals about one point three million dollars. Yeah, there's some minuses there. I'm sorry, I forgot my sheet outside, but one point three million dollars. If we were to accept everything, we'd be at five point two percent. That's actually pretty good from where we, we are year to year. So I know we're going to have a deeper conversation on Thursday, what comes in, what is, you know, axed and what gets modified, but that's where we are right now. So I haven't answered any questions, but Thursday's going to be a big day. Todd, did I say anything stupid or that needs to be clarified? Help me out, please.
Nah, I think he did fine jobs.
Over that.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
It's really the COG staff, and I will say the, the leadership in COG that have been absolutely wonderful. You know, we've seen a lot of changes with SIGC and the approaches that have been used over years previous to where we are today, and things are a little more digestible, understandable, clearer. I think it helps us with our transparency and conversations that we then have with constituents about where things are and why things are the way they are, line by line. So I, I find them very helpful, and I recommend to folks, do have the time, you probably listen, I haven't tried seeing them to see how fast their double time feature is or anything like that, but you know, a matter, a couple hours of time, you could hear things that we talked about thus far, and it's been a good conversation.
So yeah, just taking any feedback, and I, you know, I appreciate the staff involvement of this. I, I've, I've seen years where all the municipal managers have convened on the COG budget, and I've seen the finance directors, you know, attend those meetings and thank them for their time. I, I guess, man, manager, madam manager, I would be interested in if there are any concerns from a staff point that maybe we should be aware of, just wanting to make sure that this budget is going to be compatible with the fiscal sustainability of our budget as well.
Thanks Chair, the managers did convene this past week, and we had discussed many topics, and budget was one of them. And it's my understanding that there have been relatively significant increases in fire safety and perhaps even library, but I wouldn't, in my evaluation or assessment, I didn't see anything that stood out that brings to light a need for a conversation at this point in time. But ultimately, my review of COG budget contributions will be a little bit more in-depth when the finance director Todd Grady and I sit down and we review our budget and the impacts of our increases and how that's going to actually impact Ferguson Township. So I'll have more to share in the coming weeks, particularly at our first budget meeting on October seventh.
Definitely appreciate that feedback, and I, I say that because I was, my first year here was when we had the thirteen percent increase budget. It was, it was a very interesting fall that year.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say though, however, in the conversations and based on my review, those increases are relatively natural and understanding that there was information, adequate information that suggested the need for the increase, so.
Yeah, appreciate hearing about the increase of the libraries because a lot of people say that's important and, you know, I, you know, we should continue to prioritize that, especially as, I guess we are the largest consumer patron of the library system, so definitely appreciate putting all that together, you know, when we're talking to constituents.
Absolutely, and the agency directors, I think about today with libraries specifically, and there was a conversation around the four hundred and what, thirty thousand dollars plus sixty-four thousand dollar contingency to replace the roof, you know, the jingled stuff, as well as the flat roof, and you go, wow, that's a big number, but I only see twenty-one thousand five in the document. Why? Oh, because that's probably what's going to come out of municipal shares, the rest we're going to have to figure out, donations, fundraising, this and that. Okay, that's forward thinking. So we're, again, the agency directors especially, and it came through today with the library, it's, okay, they're thinking, folks are thinking differently about the budget and municipal shares and the contributions, and we see that. So yes, there might be, there is an increase when we think about fire because apparatus purchases, things we've already talked about, that we kind of knew were coming, or should have had a sense of things that were coming.
Right.
So we anticipate those things, but I always like to see the out-of-the-box thinking, and again, the library was a good example of that today as we continue the conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I was going to say, I think we're very fortunate with our current fire model because a lot of the smaller departments that heavily rely on fundraising, when, when they, they're getting the quote of a million dollars, it's like, we don't have enough bingo and hoagie sales to go around unfortunately, so, you know, some, somebody's got to pay for it, you know, so those essential services are there when you need them.
Precisely.
Yeah. Any other feedback or anything you need from us going into your next meeting?
Coffee.
We, we, I suppose we can probably arrange that.
It's been a pleasure, it really has been a pleasure, everybody, it's, it's a lot for everybody that's in that room.
Yeah. If not, next up was the Human Resources Committee, any questions for anybody to really report? Well, we talked about fire and finance, so we'll move on to Public Safety Committee.
Public Safety was a pretty quick meeting. Couple of things, number one, the EV infrastructure that was discussed last general forum.
Yep.
They're moving forward with the vehicles, I think they might even be delivered by now, I think he said within a week or two, the meeting was last week. The grants for the infrastructure they're going to go after, there's a grant that they just found, they're going to go after it, and so we recommended that at general forum we approved that, going after that grant, so we'll see that next week?
No.
Two weeks?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh yeah, right after the budget hearings.
Tuesday. Thursday. So move forward with that, the other thing was the, there's a, a truck, a big truck, very useful truck, that's really old, nineteen seventy-five, that's still unused, they redid it back in two thousand, some of the guts. We advanced, kind of preparing for that purchase in twenty thirty, so it's, it's a ways out where we need to, but they're, we're putting money every year for that purchase, I think it's probably in the budget again for another chunk, to squirrel away with interest to get to the two million dollar plus price tag. But they're going to start, they're going to make the order this year for delivery in twenty thirty because they found out that manufacturer's behind by several years.
Yeah.
Surprisingly, the, the existing truck in four or five years whenever it's delivered, still has some life to it, so they can actually sell that for several hundred thousand dollars to a smaller municipality with less reach than, than the center region, so they're going to, they're going to move, move it on and actually bring in some revenue to offset. So those are two things for Public Safety.
And just looking through the upcoming, the committee agenda, it looks like we'll be touching on all, all those coming up, so. More, more to come as administrative committee. Any questions or feedback for Omari? No? All right. Next up is the department reports.
Thank you Chair, provided with the agenda packet is a copy of the department reports, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for the manager? Just a couple, okay?
I saw that there in the permits section, madam manager of the planning report, that there were zero solar permits, just with the dissolution of the credits for solar, or just a, maybe a heads up to look out for more of those solar applications coming through.
Okay.
I think that, that there might be an uptick over the next couple of months.
Great, good to hear.
Maybe, I don't know, just.
Okay, well, we'll update in the report as we receive them.
Yeah. And then in the police, I saw that assaults and rapes were up this last month. Disappointing, is there anything that we can do? Is there some sort of, like, before somebody thinks about assaulting someone, there's some extra ordinance with extra penalties that they're going to think twice about doing that in first, and I, that just seems like, you know, the fact that they're still happening every month and no one, okay, fine, I'm going to get a fine if I kick somebody's tail, I, I don't know, I'm just asking, what, what can we do?
So I'll yield to Officer, Lieutenant Lewis.
So I, I'm not sure that there is a specific PSA or something you could do to stop people that are conducting crimes that are often done not pre-planned in the heat of the moment or opportunistic based. That being said, some of the increase on the assault front is based on how we classify child line complaints that come in in years past. If the child didn't cooperate or didn't disclose anything, like a teenage child who has a choice, or didn't disclose anything in their interview, it stays labeled as like a child line complaint, and we changed this year to classify it as the crime it's reported as, even if it's not reported by the child, it's reported by a therapist or a third party, and then go through and unfound it or make it inactive if we discover that there's nowhere to proceed forward or that maybe a crime didn't occur. So that, that's part of your increase in the assaults.
Very good. Nothing to do, but it just, there's.
But thank you for the offer.
Yeah.
We will certainly let the board know if there is anything that the board can do to provide that level of assistance.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have one, I just wanted to point out, in the planning report, under the land development plans, the, the numbers in the columns don't add up to the total, it says two and it says three, I mean, it just a.
I'll yield to the floor to our planning zoning director.
We have that. On here.
Oh, it was the zoning permits for land development.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Could all that tell that?
In column being added. Any other questions or feedback? I was going to say, thank, thank you, Kim, you've been working very hard over there.
Appreciate it.
Yes. All right, with no unfinished business, we'll go to the new business with the consent agenda, we have a micro-surfacing pay application, a donation request for the Central PA Festival of the Arts First Night, Reeds Across America, a State College Borough Bike Ride, and the Ferguson Township Social Media Policy, so if nobody wanted to pull any of those items, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I, I'm sorry, I do want to just pull the donation requests?
One or both?
Well, I guess, well, I, I guess I'm just making, yeah, I just, thank you.
Any other items? If not, can I have a, a motion to adopt consent agenda A, D, and E, A, D, and E?
This is Matt, so move.
Do we have a second?
This is Patty, a second?
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Heller, a second by Ms. Stevens, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. All right, Pat, do you want to just take both of these or one of these, Patty?
Well, just together, I, I just wanted to make sure, I, I, actually, the Reeds Across America, I, I was unclear, did they want, I didn't actually see the amount list, maybe I overlooked it? It was.
It's a great question, so I don't believe that it is on the application, and so what we generally do is just put the, what we did previous year, and I believe what we did previous year was either three fifty or five hundred, so I'd have to confirm, but I believe it was a maximum of five hundred.
Five hundred, okay.
Which the board approves by consent agenda for donation requests that are five hundred or less.
Okay. All right, and then, until we're good on our donations, I just want, that was.
Yes, and those are two different accounts, so the contribution for First Night is actually in our community contributions account, and then the, the other item is, is part of our, just kind of umbrella of funds for the board to be able to give these contributions. I think we have a cap of up to six thousand, and we have not exceeded that at this time.
Great, great, thank you, that was awesome. Thank you.
If I could just add, I think the Reeds Across America, I, I hope that supervisors and those listening will, will join us in Pine Grove Mills for this, and it was a wonderful event last year. I don't know if folks have done this before, but the reeds come in, they are packaged, you grab them up, they have bows on them, you fluff them, and you know exactly where you go to lay them at the graves of soldiers and veterans past, so it really is a great, yeah, it was really well done last year, couldn't speak highly enough of that.
Yeah, and I, you know, I have to agree with Matt and, you know, a lot of, a lot of credit out there to, to Kayla Corl, she really, really coordinated that event real well, had it well planned out, it went smoothly, yeah, definitely, and, you know, feel, feel free to, you know, join us, and I think it was only, maybe, maybe we even had it done within an hour last year, but.
It wasn't long.
You know, just a great event, us out in the community honoring our veterans and kind of learned a lot too, because, you know, they're, you know, Kayla also explained, you know, the, ev- everything, you know, the significance of putting the reeds on and, you know, the whole story, and, you know, very rewarding experience in the end, so.
And I'll add to it, I had the special honor, one thing I wanted to do was lay a wreath at the person who built our home back before eighteen forty, and they're buried in the Presbyterian Cemetery, so it was, it was nice, it was really nice. The other thing since we're just discussing the, the donations, I'm just going to keep my fingers crossed that I will get to see the ice sculptor this year for First Night, and it's not raining, or who knows what kind of weather we're going to get, yeah, I'm looking forward to that donation, seeing it actually in person too, so, Ferguson Township's Ice Sculptor.
Thank you.
I might have some photos of past ones, may, maybe I should at least get a photo that you're incented over as a manager to maybe, you know, share on social media if it, if, if it doesn't like melt before I get the photo. But yeah, that, that's a great community event, and I like that we participate in because, you know, around the holidays, a great time to get downtown, it's not like a really crowded, it's not like an event that costs an arm and a leg, you know, so you could take your family, the kids, and, you know, great event that, you know, everyone, you know, can have an opportunity to partake in, so.
And I'm sorry, last thought here, Patty just raised a good point, free parking, but if you want to make a donation to the library, work after six o'clock in the lot, and you can make a donation to the library.
Yep.
Thank you.
Excuse me Chair, I do want to make a correction for the record, last year we actually donated, our, our contribution or donation was in the amount of one thousand dollars, and so it still would be considered approval by the board, so in that case, I will look to the board to make a motion specific to the contribution. Had I not corrected myself, I would have just put five hundred, but to, to be clear, last year we did a contribution of one thousand dollars.
Would this be for Reeds Across America?
Yes.
And would we legally be able to do this tonight, or would we need to do?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, would you take a motion? I'm sorry.
Oh, we'd, we'd still be within the budget.
Yes.
Yes. Please make your move.
Would you make a motion, would, could I make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, this is Matt, and I move that the township makes a one thousand dollar donation to the Reeds Across America ceremony to be held in Pine Grove Mills, period.
Thank you. Mrs. Patty, a second?
Mrs. Omari, can I, I'd like, I move to also approve the. Ms. Amari, can I, I'd like, I move to also approve the, uh.
Oh, the First Night?
The First Night.
First Night, yeah.
As well.
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right.
Motion on the motion.
Oh.
So. Item C was moved by Mr. Heller, second, wait, or wait.
My motion is to amend Mr. Heller's to have both.
Oh, okay, so you're amending, okay, all right, so amendment by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Heller. Can we have made this easier for Chad? She's just loving this, all right.
My fault, my fault.
So, all in favor, so any discussion on the, I don't know if discussion on amendment, but.
Approved.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the amendment passes. We had the main motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any discussion on, further discussion on the main motion? All those in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no.
We did it.
This is really good practice.
I don't know what happened, but that's. Sorry.
All right.
These are good things, these are good things.
Next up, we have a public hearing on a resolution in Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the disposition of specific public records in accordance with the procedures set forth in the retention and disposition schedule for records of the Pennsylvania municipalities issued July 16th, 1993, and as amended December 16th, 2008, and I will recognize Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair, provided with the agenda is a drafted resolution advertised for public hearing, providing the disposition of certain records retained by the township, but scheduled for disposition in accordance with the retention and disposition scheduled for records of Pennsylvania municipalities. Annually, Township staff completes a listing of records that are required to be disposed of in accordance with the municipal records manual. And attached to the resolution as Exhibit A is the list of storage boxes and their contents to be disposed of, and provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for board's consideration.
All right, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone in the room that wants to address the board on this? I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Ms. Amari, so moved, that's ready.
All right, do we have a second?
Mrs. Patty, a second?
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens, any discussion?
Just one question, did we digitize any of this, or is it destroyed, or the physical records destroyed and anything digital?
So we do it in accordance with Pennsylvania Historical Commission, and so it's very clear as to what items need to be retained for digitized records and which items need to be disposed of, and so it's my understanding that what's being currently on for disposition is not digitized. And we are also able to dispose of the digitized records too, so there's various categories as to what we can and can't do with these records. I'll yield the floor to the assistant manager, if he has any other comments to provide.
That's pretty accurate, um, there's, it's a pretty clear delineation of what records need to be retained and for how long, and at what point they can be disposed of, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Copy, and, and so, a 20-year-old case that no one will ever know about it again, like.
We will not have the records, once it's disposed of, it's disposed of.
Okay.
Which, there, there's a lot of detail and information in the Pennsylvania Historical Commission, as well as the retention manual. And so that's the guidance that informs us as a government, like as a municipality, and more information is provided in those documents that can speak to the categorization, as well as the why too, why it's recommended that records are disposed of, if you think about right-to-know records and having an endless, um, you know, data storage, it would become very difficult to sift through those things, and so essentially, the state, the, the law allows us to dispose of records, and depending on the type of record that it is, allows for us, and how we receive that record, right? So if we receive it by email, it informs on how long we need to keep the digitized record for. If we receive it by mail, it allows for us to, you know, i- it informs us to when and how we can dispose of the hard copy, as well as how long we should keep the, the digitized record. So I'm not gonna pretend that I have a, a depth of knowledge as to the detail within those documents, but we have a team that has spent a significant amount of time working to try and organize a, a tool, a reference tool for our successors, and just for our, our staff to be able to reference as a guide, um, and then also inform this decision process to help get to the board the policy decision. So what's been brought to you, certainly, it's taken weeks for review, it usually comes from a department, recommended that they would like to, to dispose of these records per, per the law, and then it goes through this team, they review, and then it comes to the board of supervisors for review and action.
And they're not archived anywhere else?
No.
Okay. These are the rules. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will have the Township Manager call the roll.
Thank you, Chair, so this is a resolution, uh, authorizing disposition of specific public records in accordance with retention and disposition schedule for records of Pennsylvania municipalities. Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Stevens?
Yes.
Supervisor Heller?
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, resolution passes unanimously.
All right, next, we have a discussion on an authorization to submit speed reduction requests to PennDOT for scenic Route 26, SR 26 in Pine Grove Mills.
Thank you, Chair, so the township recently received correspondence from a resident, Mr. Nathan Earl, regarding roadway safety along Route 26, and the resident expressed concern that travel lanes appear to be too narrow for the existing traffic volume and roadway usage. Vehicles frequently approach into the designated bike lane, creating conflicts with cyclists and pedestrians, as this resident has noted and expressed this observation. Vehicle speeds are believed by residents to be excessive for the conditions and contribute to safety risks. And so per policy, we bring this to the board supervisors for consideration for, um, for the action to be taken to submit a letter to PennDOT. It's their road, it's ultimately their decision to determine what their next steps are, we're essentially just, yeah, and we're, we're just providing the, um, the advocacy, if you will, but ultimately, it'll be PennDOT's decision. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the board's consideration.
Any questions on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
This is Matt, I move that the board supervisors authorize staff to send a letter of request for speed study to PennDOT.
Mrs. Patty, a second?
Got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens, uh, any discussion on this?
Yes, if I may, just maybe some, some clarification, is anything here binding with whatever PennDOT comes back with? If a speed study says, actually, we can increase the speed to 95 miles an hour.
It's their road.
They could do that. I remember we entered into the same type of conversation when we lowered the speed limit in Pine Grove Mills years ago, and there was almost a hesitancy to involve PennDOT because of potential binding, um, you know, rules that, and what I understood from PennDOT at the time was that because there were no major accidents or deaths in Pine Grove Mills when the speed limit was 35, except for a very small part of town that was 25, that they could actually have raised the speed limit to 45. And of course, the resident said, that doesn't seem safe at all, does it? And we were then able to have the township work at it, where we were said, no, 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 we will just expand the 25 zone. So there was something that was done that way, that really supported the safety, so I wasn't sure.
We have that latitude for our roads, uh, by, by a road owned by the state. Once we send a letter just making, and so essentially, the request is, will Ferguson Township send the letter of request to PennDOT? PennDOT can say, no, we're not interested, or we could decide, the board can decide this evening not to send a letter, um, and can deny the request, uh, that was submitted by the resident. But to your point, Supervisor Heller, it's not our decision, and ultimately, once, once we send that letter of request, PennDOT is ultimately in the, in the decision to decide if they wanna, if they wanna accept our request, and then if they do, to your point, if they come back and, and, and the data suggests that they should increase the speed limit or reduce the speed limit, perhaps to a lower speed that's actually problematic to another resident, it's ultimately their final decision, where if it was our road, we would ultimately be the final decision maker, um, and to, you know, to determine what we would like to do, but once we would bring PennDOT into the decision-making process, we would have to adhere to their recommendation for even our roads. But in this particular case, Route 26 is 25, the state, and so ultimately, this evening, the only action by the board is to determine if you wanna submit the letter of request, which could be denied or accepted. If denied, it shuts down, if accepted, PennDOT takes it from there, and it's ultimately their decision.
I would offer that we're asking, or a resident has requested to take a look, that it's okay to ask PennDOT to take a look. Now, if they say increase, it would make sense to me that they would, that maybe have a couple of menu of options, if you like to say, or that stretch of road, or kind of around there, and then there, they would, I can't imagine that they wouldn't take a little bit of community input around it. They could say increase or keep the same, we'd say, oh, keep the same. Um, or if they do have the decrease or keep the same, we, maybe we'd say, we'll decrease, 'cause there's a resident who wanted to take a look. It would be interesting if they were to kind of make a decision and knew it, and it'd be negatively impacting to what's there today. Often, they'd only wanna approve it and prove it.
If I could maybe offer an alternative to all of this, maybe this is more of a request that we ha- ask, you know, the staff to review how we were able to lower the speed of a PennDOT road through Pine Grove Mills to 25, without PennDOT really being, needing to be at the table. Because I think there's something there nearly 20 years ago, that we were able to do it without having to involve PennDOT even on their state road.
20 years ago would be before our time, and I would also note changes have probably happened, significant changes. I know that this is actually, because of another, recently, the board approved at the last meeting a request for a petition to do a speed limit reduction, um, at the last meeting. And so we just recently were in these discussions, and we have another resident, actually, on Whitehall Road, who's recently, you know, been exploring and requests from the township for a speed limit reduction. So these conversations have been, um, well, really active, and most recently, so, so all of that to say, I can't speak to the reference that you're referring to from 20 years ago. I, I'm, I'm happy to see what exploratory conversations we might be able to have, to see if someone can recall a, a time where maybe PennDOT yielded the floor to the township. But I can't guarantee that it, that it happened, and I can't guarantee that if it did happen then, that regulatory changes haven't been made that would ultimately put us where we are today. But with, certainly something we can look into and get, come back.
I move to table this pending exploration of the 20 years ago.
Sounds great.
And I'm sorry, it was more like 17 or 16 years ago, but, oh, Lisa's got a hand up to it, I'm sorry, Chair.
Lisa, my, no, I'm sorry, Lisa.
No, I was just gonna add that CCMPO meets tomorrow, it could be helpful at all if I asked, um, there about, um, either a recommendation or maybe, um, an example of an experience recently. I know that Harris Township has tried more recently than we have to lower a speed on Route 45, so I don't know if there's, um, if there's interest, I can raise that tomorrow.
I'm happy to kind of look at our records, our records would indicate, um, I can talk to our township engineer, and also, I have no problem calling PennDOT District 2, who's our primary contact, and so we have a good relationship with them.
I think that sounds good.
I think even more recently, uh, Atherton Street was reduced to 25. That might have been within the last five or six years. I remember when that happened. Yes, Mr. Pat, Mr. Patterson, you've moved to table it, but I haven't heard a proper second. Or are you rescinding that?
No.
Of course, without a second, it, it just fails.
Properly moved in technically.
Okay, so.
I'm a little more nimble.
Okay, motion to table by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens, yes, that's no, not debatable, so the, so this will go immediately to a vote, so a motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Aye, it's been tabled. And that will bring us to the certification of the 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for a Police Pension Fund and the Non-Uniform Pension Fund, and tonight, we recognize the Finance Director.
Thank you, Chair, in accordance with the Act 205, not 2025, 1984, amended by Act 189 of 1990, provided with the agenda as a memorandum of the Township Manager dated September 15th, 2025, describing the anticipated MMO for a police and non-uniform pension plans for 2026. Act 205 requires a minimum pension obligations for the upcoming year to be calculated and submitted to the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors prior to September 30th of each year to be adopted by resolution. The minimum cost to be estimated, 415,000, 600, 467, for the police-defined benefit pension plan, and 287,949 for the non-uniform, non-uniform 401A defined contribution pension plan. The state A value has not been provided at the time of this discussion, and the net cost to the township represented by the total municipal pension cost minus the state A value, multiplied by the number of participants in each plan cannot be presently determined. This item is for informational only, and no action is required by the board. There's a recommended motion that you receive the memorandum outlining the 2026 certification of the pension funds municipal, minimum municipal obligations.
So any questions on this one?
No.
Okay. Um, if not, and no action was required, I would be okay moving the communications to the board if everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you, Todd, um, any communications to the board?
I.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, I just had some communications from residents about paving on North Island Street, which has been forwarded and addressed by staff, so, thank you.
All right. Mr. Heller?
I had a resident contact me about trash day and the fact that the new trash receptacles in Pine Grove Mills, um, when they're on the sidewalks, are actually blocking pedestrians and wheelchair access to folks that may use the sidewalks, so I wasn't sure, again, just noting that as something for a conversation.
That, I was gonna say, that was a concern that I had, like, did they have to wheel them up to the street, or, you know, could they leave them? I was thinking about them leaving them like in front of the sidewalk, so you could still go through, and somebody, of course, would just have to, like, grab the can, but.
So it was raised as a concern.
Okay, and they, they know they can contact Center County?
Center, yeah, then cog, yes.
Perfect.
All right.
Question for you on that, the, when Berman put them out, did they put them in that location on the sidewalk?
How did they put them on the sidewalk?
'Cause they, there was a sticky that said, put it right here, we're gonna put it where we want it, you put it back here, I'm just curious where they put them?
No.
And still drop off.
Unfortunately, in Pine Grove Mills, you have a lot of houses, just due to history, are right up there, and it's sidewalk and road. There's no place to put.
Right.
The, the receptacle, so it's, I've seen where they were dropped off in a couple places, some of them were in those locations where it's like, you just can't, there's no place to put your receptacle, unless you wanna wheel it down someplace else, and, you know, not in front of your home. It, it's tough, so.
And the particular residents that reached out to me before all that, at, at their particular location, there was like at least like a two-foot rise, you know, the road was like two feet above the level of the sidewalk, so you also have that logistic to overcome.
What time did they pick up your trash there, 'cause mine gets picked up at 6:00, I don't have a sidewalk, but mine gets picked up at 6:00 a.m. And, um, just curious, is yours picked up at 6:00 a.m.?
No, it's usually, I've noticed around 1:00, 1:30, 2:00, somewhere within maybe the 1:00 hour, I'd say.
Interesting, so I wonder if it's something they could look into a, a different time for theirs, since there's a sidewalk issue, that maybe that they could, if we could have Center County. could have Center County Refugees and Recycling talk to them about picking up first thing in the morning there.
I'll raise that, yeah. If only we knew somebody on the Climate Action Sustainability Committee.
Somebody competent. Do you have anybody competent?
Competent? No.
Put someone.
On the committee, yes.
Any other communications to the board?
Lots. Holy moly.
Oh, boy.
All over the place. So I went to a healthcare event at the North End Club on Saturday. Lot of, and that's in the township, and so a lot of township businesses were kind of showing their health stuff. And one was a new business to the township, a bike shop over on College Avenue. It was really neat, talking to them, they're excited, they came from the borough to the township with their business, more space, you know, better access for their riders, their employees. But even more than that, their, the owner of the business is working with our Economic Development Group Advisory, Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Advisory Committee. And I just want to, not to embarrass them too much, they were, they just felt very excited about that, that group, that committee, and they felt heard. And so just a shout out to staff on, on listening and, you know, pulling that in, all that information, and, you know, getting more ideas and more ways to support the township. So very excited about the results of all this, now that we're in the throes of it and advancing that. With that, I then talked to, I went to a chamber lunch today, and the chamber rep was, you know, came to me and said, oh, Ferguson, good to meet you, and then said, she's so excited that Ferguson is the first municipality to move forward with this, with the, from the, we got the Chamber Vision document that presented here, we are the first municipality to move out on expanding from that Chamber document. And, and so the chamber is very excited about Ferguson moving forward on that end. So again, another shout out to staff. I'm not doing it. Certainly want it, but we are doing it. It's, it's staff. So thank you staff for pressing forward that, getting some really good feedback there. Another person got pulled over by the Ferguson Township Police, and they said, man, that, that police person was just so kind. So another shout out to our police department for leading with empathy while also making sure that folks are following speed limits. So thank you to the police. I'll skip that one. Now for the controversial one. Someone approached me, said, Amari, these budgets, I know I've been talking very openly and publicly about budgets and how they're, they're just going up. They look at federal trends, look at state trends, it's, it's just weaseling its way down to local trends of everything just costs more, unfortunately. And so, and somebody came to me and said, Amari, when, I know it failed decades ago, but when are we going to talk about bringing municipalities together? Will you regionalize? And I was like, oh, God, no, no, no. I'm glad there's this kind of regional thing, that's another line item to budget, but when are we going to start bringing municipalities together and central, more central, centralized, centralizing more items? So I just bring that to the board. From the community that I'm hearing about, we need to find other ways to save money. And if you think about a large business, they go gobble up smaller businesses, or the reverse, you know, they'll kind of just come together, and so then you're able to get more efficiency from, you know, and more business from the larger, a larger entity. So just, I'll send that out there, it's coming from the community.
So to condense it into, what I'm hearing you say is merging townships?
I don't know what the mechanism is to do with, but I, I mean, if that's what you want to say, you said it.
All right. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put it into everyday terms. So the suggestion is, or the, the idea out there is bigger townships taking, gobbling up smaller townships. Okay?
Consolidation. It's been explored before, and there's chatter about it, and it's, it's a long-term process. It's not like we would consolidate overnight.
Well, right, I mean, Sandy Township, you boys are.
They've been years, and I think even a couple voter referendums into it, yeah.
There was a forcing function there, and we don't want any forcing functions. I think we should be thinking, in addition to this person that brought it to me, I'm now like, I guess rather than wait till some township goes bankrupt and they need help, we should think about, and our other municipalities should be, begin thinking about, maybe if we did come together and, you know, we've got an aging, aging popular, aging staff over there, they're about to retire, why don't we just, you know, it's going to take years, but I think it's something that we should start investigating. And it was a great conversation with a person a couple days ago.
We'd, we'd want to approach it cautiously, but also keep the humanity in mind, because we have a lot of great, you know, people performing great services in our communities, so.
That's another discussion that we're, this is more about bringing it to the board to start thinking about, but in advancing it, obviously, yeah, there's some, there's some ways to do it, and there's some ways not to do it. We would not do it the way not to do it, if we're moving that direction, so.
I will say, when you were talking about aging, you were staring right at me for a second. You were staring at somebody else. Looked at somebody else. Staring at the audience. Thank you for that.
Anyone on the list?
I'm skipping one, so I'm.
I'm skipping one, okay. I did receive an email about a bike, upcoming bike grant. Probably should share that with the manager, because I think grants would be a board function, but it may even be appropriate to a regional, so I might actually redirect that person to CRPA staff, you know, because I know they do a lot of bike work and such within the region. Had the privilege of joining our wonderful staff today for lunch. They appreciated lunch. They, we, we had subs, we had potato chips, some soda, and homemade cookies from, made by Ms. Stevens. The homemade cookies took the, the show. You want your chips back? Your chips are still here, but I'm sure you're being appreciated by people that need some snacks every now and then. So, yeah, it was nice to join them for lunch, and, you know, just, yeah, great, great getting to meet people and all that.
Great idea.
Thank you. I was going to say, we would do it again, unless you don't want, you don't want food, do you? No, they wouldn't refuse, refuse. So, yeah, thank you for all you do, and it was great to join you today. Any other communications to the board? If not, all these calendar items, there's going to be an open house on streetlight, fire hydrant, Oakwell ordinance amendments on September 18th and September 25th. We will be hosting the Public Utility Commission for a public hearing on the Rock Springs Water Company acquisition on September 30th at 1:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. I would encourage residents to visit our website, because that particular event's going to have a little bit of a different format, so if you do want to speak publicly, you do need to pre-register. So all the information you need to know will be on our website that you can reference to participate in that. And then the last three items, we will be having our budget meetings on October 7th, 14th, and 16th. They will all start at 6:00 p.m. here in this room. You're welcome to join us online. We do also have plenty of room in, in here for in-person attendance, so we would welcome you to join us. There is a lot of information to cover, but as always, when public is attending, you're free to stay for the whole meeting or a particular section, so you're free to come and go as you wish, but you're definitely welcome to join us for all the, all the meetings there, so feel free to mark those on your calendars.
Just one other thing I wanted to bring, it was in our newsletter that went out, our ABC application period is open.
Okay, yes. Yep. So also check out our website if you want to participate on our authorities, boards, and commissions. We'll be taking applications through, what is it? Just, I think the end of October?
That's right.
Yeah, the end of October, and then we'll do some interviews and make our appointments in the months to follow, so. If nothing else, Patty, bring it up.
I'm adjourned.
Okay, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.